Seventh, bench draft exclusive information made in order of the fesulages.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, we are. Okay, right call, Mr. Lego?
Yes, sir. President. Mr. Chassid.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
Here.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Matarazzo.
Here.
Mr. Namek.
Here.
Mr. Trucey.
Here.
Mr. Stovall.
Here.
And Dr. Trudy is out of town. You have a hand, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lego.
You're welcome.
Okay, special reports, Mr. Leonard?
Good evening, fellow board members. I'm going to give you a brief IU report. I would encourage you to refer to the IU summary that we get if you need more detail. But our meeting was held February 23rd, 2016, the intermediate unit on Donovan Road. Thirteen members present, four absent. We approved different committee reports and financial reports, approved the IU general operating budget. We approved a variety of miscellaneous repomers, resignations, and other personnel items. Approved long list of miscellaneous service agreements. We approved a professional services contract with PSBA for a compensation study for all Act 93 employees. And many changes are still underway at the IU number seven, at the direction of the new executive director, Dr. Jason Condon.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Career tech myself, I met on, you got your minutes in your email. We met on the 17th of February, and a variety of things we did. Okay, we did approve the trans note for the, to do away with anticipatory note for borrowing money, which was going to save $67,000, but it is still, there was much discussion. I don't think the board was really in favor of it. We went along with the business managers. And the reason not in favor, I've discussed this a few times here already, because the state budget, it has not been passed this year yet. We don't know what's going to happen next year. And to have the school districts pay every month, is there a month or a quarter? How's it going to be done now?
I think they decided on monthly.
I think monthly. We just think that's more bookwork, et cetera, but we went along with the business manager. They do it every day. We still had a hard time with it. Okay, we approved the students to go to their school competition in Hershey, Pennsylvania, which is April 13th to the 15th. And then we had an executive session regarding our IU director, who has, and I had to confront him on it. He has no VOTEC background at all. And he wanted to start charging us $15,000 a year for his services beginning July 1st. And that did not go well at all either. And we says, well, we had different choices. We discussed superintendent at large, we discussed that one. And we also brought up, and I brought it up, I said, why not ask the retired VOTEC administrator, if he'd want to come in, maybe quarterly, and just pay him a couple hundred dollars an hour, whether it might be just for one day every quarter, to get an observation and see what he thought, how we're doing, our programs going. And we're going to discuss this a little more in detail, our meeting on the 17th, 16th of this month. And the $15,000 did not grow well with the board at all. It just, it did not register. We just think it, the IU director's here to help us out, and we are very pleased with our, with our math. We have principal and our two assistant principals do, and everything's going, I think, very well. Good graduation, open house, the parking lot's packed, graduation, which I never go to because I'm always here. The parking lot's always packed, and they have it at the, at the WCC, and they have the community college. Even upper tech, people are standing, the three and four deep of graduation practice, it is that popular. And the program's going very well, so we decided we made the superintendent. And this superintendent right here is well-respected, well-thought-of, and when he makes recommendations, almost everybody, everybody does listen. Okay, that's all I have right now. And the executive session, we just came out of executive session. We did potential litigation matters, sale and purchase of real estate, collective bargaining matters, confidential student matters. Okay, the board also meant to receive information, one for financial matters. That's what we did for the executive session. Our information, Dr. Harris?
Sure. First, we're going to turn it over to our business manager.
And I'm going to turn it over to our auditors. You all received a copy of their report, which they will briefly summarize. As you know, we had used Sarfman Company for many years, but after many years of service, Mr. John Sarfman decided to retire. A lot of his business went to our new auditors, Zen Lekowski and Axelrod. I hope I didn't butcher that too much. But, so they're going to, they're here, and they're going to give us an update on the audit, and we will approve it if you all agree next week. And ask any questions as you see fit, so.
You have the floor.
Hi, everyone. I'm Brian Crucial. I'm the senior manager on the job. This is Alexis. She was the senior on the job. She did the day-to-day work. We're with Zen Lekowski, Axelrod, like Brett said. We actually merged with Sarfman Company after John retired. So Jared, who was a partner, you might have, might have attended these board meetings in the past. He's still with us. He just had another engagement tonight, and he couldn't make it. But everything, you might notice some differences in the formatting of the report, but everything should be relatively the same. I don't know, hopefully there wasn't any major differences this year that you've noticed. We thought it was relatively seamless. If you look at the audit reports, there's two of them this year. I don't know how Sarf did them in the past, but we do the financial statements and the single audit separate. So the bigger ones, the financial statements, and you can go through those. If you go, page one is our audit opinion, and that's an unmodified opinion. We didn't have any issues on the financial statements. There's no, no issues that we came across that would cause us to not give an unmodified opinion. An unmodified opinion is the best opinion we can give you. And if you look through, on the second page of the opinion, the first paragraph there is adoption of GAZB statement. And you'll notice, as we go through the report, there's some new things this year. There was new pension reporting requirements for 2015's audit, and that was, it held off a lot of our school district audits to begin with. And that was just from Peasars, which every school district's enrolled in. We're required now to report a liability for your fin, for your, on your financial statements, for the unfunded portion of Peasars, the state plan. And they actually give that information to us. They have an audit by SB company, I believe, the state system does, and they give the audit opinion to us. And they break it out by each school district and the state, who owes what. You'll see, if you go to page 15, 16, it is, if you look down, about halfway down the page, you'll see right at the bottom of li, total liabilities, right above that is net pension liability, and that's $71 million. So that wasn't there in the past. So if you compare page 16 this year to the statement of net position last year, it's going to look a lot worse just because of that, the $71 million of liability added. There's nothing you did wrong on that. That's just the Peasars amount that was given to us, given to you by the state's system. Other than that, there shouldn't really become any changes within the financial statements. Page 18 is the general fund balance sheet. And you'll notice you have about four and a half million in fund balance. And if you look on page 20, your current year, or your prior year expenditures, your 2015 expenditures were around 50 million. So you have almost 10% of your current year expenditures saved up in fund balance, which is a pretty good benchmark amount. That's, that's good to have. That means you're not going to be in any trouble. Like, this year, you probably used a lot of it just because of what's been going on with the budget. But there's not really anything new to see in the financial statements themselves. Some of the notes have changed slightly because, like I said, the GAZB statements they adopted. The main changes are going to be in the other supplemental information notes in the very last few pages of the report, page 54, 55. These are new schedules that were required by the GAZB statement. And those are the last few pages of the report. And those come from the state as well, the Peasars report that we get. That's it for the financial statements, really. That was just like a brief overview. Is there any questions on those financial statements? I know you've had them for longer than this to go through. So if you have anything, fire away. Next, we can move on to the single audit, if you want. This is the short one. This is just your report on federal awards and internal control over federal awards. If you look at page, I think it's four, three, where the federal awards actually start. Actually, it's six. That's where the federal awards start. The two, our two opinions are in the front, pages two through five, or one through five. And these are, the first two pages are internal control over financial reporting, our opinion there. We did have a couple findings about reporting for federal awards, and you saw those in the back of this report. So those are listed in this opinion, and then pages three, four, and five. That's our opinion over federal awards. And you'll see the findings listed in there as well. Page six is your listing of federal awards, what you spent during 14, 15. And you can see it's the same programs as before. You have the lunch program, you have Title I, Title II, and IDEA. We tested IDEA and Title I as your major programs this year, which means we did compliance testing for those two programs. The results of our testing are on page nine. This is basically just a summary of our testing. You'll see the audit, auditor's report, first line is unmodified. That's our financial statement report. We didn't have to modify our, our opinion because of the findings we had. There were some, the next part is internal control of financial reporting. We did have some material weaknesses. Those are the two findings. And they were basically just, their reporting findings was, they're not major. It's just, I think the one was, they didn't, some of the numbers didn't tie from one report, didn't tie to the GL, the cash on hand reports. And that's easily correctable. The other one, I think, was some of the funding sources weren't split into their object codes from PDE, which isn't like a major finding, but PDE does say that you should break them out by that. So we had to give you a finding for that. And that's it for the findings. And you can look down through that page. So there are findings under federal awards as well, and then the major programs are down there at the bottom, Title I, Title I and IDEA. And then the rest of the report is just the listing of those findings. Page 10 and 11 are the current year findings. Page 12 relists the current year findings, and we have to show them as internal control findings and federal award findings. And then page 13 is actually the scheduled prior audit findings. These are from last year. And if you'll see, the finding we had last year repeats again this year as finding 2015, oh, oh, one. So it's the same findings, just carried over from last year. Like I said, they weren't major programs. We didn't, we have to list them as findings, but we didn't have to change anything on our financial statement opinion as a result of them. Is there any questions on the single audit report? That's really all we have.
I just, I just want to say that with the change from Sarfman Company, it was a seamless transition. I, I'd like to thank Brian and Alexis for coming in and not creating any waves. It really was, they picked up right where Sarf left off. So we're happy to establish the relationship, and we look forward to many good years going forward. So, thanks, everyone, for coming in.
And what we do is, we'll take it home. If you have any question, we get to Mr. Lego.
Yeah, you can just ask now.
Absolutely. And then, if the board does pass it next week, traditionally, and if you talk to Jared, he used to go down ballot at the courthouse, and then let us know the dates, and we can publish it.
Yep.
All right.
That works a lot.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And next, we have Mr. Inglazie.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. We have good news to report this month regarding the project in terms of the financial outlook. We're getting some money back from some credits for some work that was done, so we didn't have to tap into contingency this month, so that's good news. We have, we did take over the video room today, or started to go in there today, so the kids should be transitioned in hopefully by the end of the week. So that, we're excited about getting that, that room and that whole program moving forward. The gym and fitness center, the fitness center, the kids have been in there for a week or two now, so that's been, been used. And I've seen a lot of the kids in there, eating out for hours, and see a lot of people in there, so the feedback's been good on that. The gym was just resurfaced, so the floor is down. It really looks, it pops pretty good with the new floor and the new wood that's there. We need to let it cure for the rest of this weekend. Got to do a few touch-up things this weekend. We should have that gym totally turned over to us next week sometime, so I look forward to that. We're also going into the kitchen area. We started that, so Robin was displaced, and it was very chaotic for her this week, or last week, so she's got a little learning curve right now to figure out what, what we're doing over there. But we got the new, the new temporary serving area done, and it went pretty well. You agree?
Yeah.
I was there the first day. The kids went through the lines, and it seemed to run, run very smooth. So thank you for your efforts with making that work out, and the contractors helped us out a lot there. So it's working well. I think we'll be fine for the, for the rest of the year with the temporary serving lanes. We're going to start the pool and locker room areas in a couple weeks, as soon as the pool, or the swim season's over. And we went in the training room this week as well to get that rolling. So I'll turn it over to Brené and Hank. You guys, did I say everything?
Basically, you said everything.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If there are any questions, like Scott had said, there, there were several deduct change orders this month. The total credit for the month was $2,984.50 for the, for the small changes that were made. Other than that, if there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. But Scott's pretty much given you the update of where the project stands.
I do want to mention that on the report, I did indicate that we found some questionable material above the ceiling in the kitchen on Friday. PSI testing came out, took samples. I actually spoke with them today. There is no asbestos, so I want to make sure everybody was aware of that.
We're sitting at about $320,000 of contingency with about five months to go, so we'll keep our fingers crossed. You know, the kitchen and locker room areas is an area that we think some high risk is there, so hopefully we don't run into too many problems, and we'll be able to stay within our budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll turn it back over to Mr. Lego.
Okay. Next topic is our decision for next year, whether or not we want to remain on the national school lunch program here at the high school, or whether we want to go off the program and be able to do some things differently than we're currently doing, based on not having as, as much restrictions placed on us by the, by the program. Some of you may have seen the Tribune yesterday. There was an article in there, which I was probably quoted more than I had hoped to be. And I hope that Rob and I was pretty much accurate in terms of what I said. But the bottom line is, we're going to hear a presentation from Robin today to, to tell us what our options are if, at the high school only, we go off the program. Again, we are not in this to make a profit. Our goal is to be as breakeven as possible. It has been challenging the last several years to turn, to breakeven.
What do we usually lose each year?
We have been losing on average, or subsidizing on average, about $20,000 a year. That's based in part on our participation number being very low, and it's also based on our enrollment going down by a few students every year. So those combination of things have, have really hurt the participation rate. It's hurt the bottom line. Again, we haven't made money in many, many years. But it's our hope that if we try this, if we pilot it for one year, and our goal would be to, to breakeven and stop the bleeding that we've seen over the past several years. We think it's a great opportunity with the new cafeteria that we're going to have, the new kitchen that Robin's going to have. We think it'll generate a lot of excitement, and we think that it'll be much more appealing to the high school students and the options they're given. So, having spewed that much, I'll turn it over to Robin for her little presentation.
It's interesting, a PowerPoint.
Yes, I do have a PowerPoint. This is Doug Kaufman. He's the district manager with Airmark for this account, too, so he's here with me today.
And I would like to thank Scott and his team as well, because the transition, you turned it around basically in a day to make, to create a kitchen in, in the cafeteria, and, and it's running surprisingly well with that quick turnaround time. The IT guys, the maintenance guys, the whole team pulled that thing together, and your team as well, obviously. Without, you don't have enough storage space, you don't have enough cold space, but, but you're making it all work.
Keep it down.
So we're very.
So we're looking forward to next year. So.
Yep.
Basically, this is just a, a couple slides to demonstrate the potential of what could be on the menu for next year. So station brands, these are actually Airmark station brands, but they're not set. This just gives you an idea of what would be offered. So we would definitely have a deli. A deli option would consist of some paninis, some specialty breads. Healthy for Life is some grab-and-go's, you know, hummus, and a couple vegan vegetarian items. Custom Brothers grills, grill items, a lot of grab-and-go. Specialty bars, like a tortilla line. Fresh express salad bar. Our salad bar right now is very minimal. This will give us a very nice salad bar for next year. Corner crust is specialty pizza, so we're offering next year calzones and strambolis, and also some specialty flatbreads.
I would add here that the district has already looked, looked far enough in advance to order the equipment that's going to make that happen. Panini grills, an impinger oven, just like a pizza operation runs. So that's already built, built into what's going to be happening.
So moving, moving to the next slide. We put in examples of a pricing structure for next year, if potentially to go off the national school lunch program. We would run a three-tier pricing, anywhere from $3.20 to $4.50. Breakfast price range would be $1.75 to $2. Some of the breakfast options, you know, may include, but not limited to. Definitely a bagel bar, specialty bagels, different types of cream cheeses for the kids to have. Toasters available. Vegetable and fruit smoothie bar, very popular, very healthy. Maybe some kale and protein additives, if we could do that. Hot breakfast sandwich selections, combo breakfast meals, and definitely some, you know, base assorted cereals. Lunch examples would be soup and sandwich combos, sandwich and salads, paninis with different breads, flatbreads, pakasas, ciabatte's. Corner crust pizza, like I said, and the Custom Brothers grill. Daily features and specialty burgers. We would definitely do like a Black Angus burger, which is really popular right now. The next slide gives you an example of actually what a bundled meal would look like. So in the $3.20 bundle meal, all the entrees would include up to two sides and a choice of, an eight-ounce milk or water. So your entree could be one of like a pizza slice, hamburger, cheeseburger, chicken nugget, chicken patty. There, there definitely could be more options available in that $3.20. This is just the base. This isn't set in stone yet.
Well, would that be similar to what the kids are seeing right now? Would it be a little more robust because you're not, don't have all the restrictions?
Well, it's going to be, it's going to be a little bit of both. I mean, we're going to be able to offer more topping bars and some, some different items like that. But it is a base lunch, like you had a chicken nugget, you know, chicken patty. There's not much to do with those items. It's similar to what we do. But we do use like Tyson products, which is a good, you know, product. But it wouldn't have to be a whole grain product.
How would the, how would the portion size compare to what's being offered now?
Depending on bundles.
Okay.
You know, that's, that's one thing. When you go with a bundle, like the portion size for a chicken patty, we could definitely look at, they offer two different sizes. So we could, might be able to do a higher, you know, ounce per student. Right now, it's two, two ounce meat, meat alternative for a student with the national school lunch program. But with not being on the program, we could offer definitely four, five, six ounces of protein.
Now, where do you, if you're going to roll out this plan, how do you take into consideration that the plan that's very stringent now, you kind of meet in the middle, or you'll still have some kind of metric?
Yes.
You don't want to go to the other end where we're eating grease every day.
No, no.
So how do you kind of monitor that?
Well, we still will have dietary, like guidelines. We want to keep the integrity definitely of the menu and, and the recipes, and especially for the nurses, because we deal a lot with the nurses with nutritional guidelines, anybody with special dietary needs, carb counts, diabetics, lactose intolerant people. So we still want to, you know, do that part of it. So we're not going to the extreme. You know, right now, it's here. We're not going to jump all the way to here. There'll still be plenty of healthy options for the students. So that's, that's one thing with the, the slide before, was with the Health, Healthy for You slide. So, but it gives the students a, a bigger choice and a bigger range. The $3.85 bundle meal would, would be a deli panini sandwich, again, with all the different breads, instead of just a white bread or a whole grain bread. We thought about soup in a bread bowl, the calzones or strambolis. And a specialty bar of the week would be either like a taco bar with more than one taco, burrito bar. It could be Asian cuisine. It could be any type of different types of bars. And the $4.50 bundle meal is basically your, your highest tier, where you're looking at the Black Angus burgers, the salad bar. We would do 10 or 12-inch sub days, so there would be like a nice hoagie. They could be baked through the impinger oven. The students could ask what toppings. Sort of like a concept that's out there now in the retail area. Boneless chicken basket and cheesesteak days. Again, a lot of the $4.50 bundle is a lot of interaction with the students to, you know, say, what would you like going in? And some of the side choices, the new kitchen will have some fryers, or we will be doing both fried and baked fries. We've had a lot of requests for that. Tater tots, hot, hot and cold vegetables, seasonal fresh fruits, more than our standard fresh fruits right now. We could offer more kiwi and strawberries and, you know, fresh whole grain, or fresh whole grain, fresh fruit selection, sorry. And of course, we'd still offer canned fruits, too, because it depends on the season.
None of this would be made to order, right?
Made to order?
Yes.
Um.
Because you just don't have the time with 10:30.
Well, you, you do, you do. Because of the way the line is going to flow, right now, there's specific lines that the kids had to go through. When it's going to be a food court setting, they're not going to have to wait in a specific line. They can go to any station, and then the cashier lines are going to be out here. So they don't have to wait in one single line. So the flow is actually a lot quicker when you do that. It's been a success at other schools. So if somebody wants to special, specially top a flatbread pizza for it to wait to go through the impinger oven, and they want a red sauce with chicken and cheese and hot pepper, we can do that. And it takes two to three minutes in the impinger oven, depending on the speed. Any questions about that? Okay, and then the last slide, we want to talk about a little bit of the opportunity and a little bit about risk. The new facility definitely will generate a lot of excitement. I know, I'm very excited about it. We're looking forward to the opportunity to plan the menus for the students. I've had student food committee meetings where the kids are looking forward to it, that are in the sophomore, junior year. The suggestion of the three-tier price, definitely to create a menu structure. And again, what I showed you was just the base. I mean, we, we have a lot more options out there to choose from. And then even broader vending options we can look at.
So there's always, with the opportunities, there's also risks that are involved. And that's always more or less on the financial end. You will lose the commodities that you get at the high school, and then you have to take into account how you handle free and reduced eligible students, and you have to cover the reimbursements that you get from the federal and state government with cash, cash sales to make up that difference. Then the last note that we have there is in, in the participation, you know, how, until the kids get used to how the pricing, pricing works and what they're, what they're choosing to purchase.
You have a statistic right, how many kids participate right now?
We have about a third, about a third of the high school students participate right now.
And you think it's because of the food that's offered?
Well, I think because of the time, too. I mean, a lot want to see different options, you know, or they don't want to wait in a specific line. When you have the food court and you have multiple options where they can grab and go, and they're only spending maybe a minute, you know, to go in, get their stuff, and then go through the line, I think that will help a lot, too. Because right now, a student can wait when doing time studies. It can be 10 minutes sometimes, depending on what day of the week it is or what line they choose to go. And I don't think they'll have that issue. It's been proven that time studies, that when you have a food court setting, it's, it's less of a wait, much less of a wait.
I think you might have shared this in the executive remarks, but is there any schools that you work with that you've introduced this, and do you have any statistics of what the increase in participation was?
We, we do have two, two of Airmark schools that I know of that have done this. They've had success rate in participation after going off, their high school went off the program, just because of the students liking the different options and more protein, not so restrictive with everything. Because you have some people that really want that, and then with still offering healthier options, they get both instead of just one option. So they get, they, you satisfy both groups.
It's, I see some of that tier would actually be cheaper. I used to eat two lunches a day when I went through there. And that would be, in this scenario, more expensive than just going to that third tier, getting a little bit more food.
Right. Yeah.
Well, you said about a third of high school participates now, which I think there's about 1,200 kids at the high school, so approximately 400 kids are participating. How many of those kids are free and reduced?
We have 160 free and about 34 reduced at the high school, so roughly 200 students.
So about half the ones that are currently purchasing.
No, we don't get full participation from all the free and reduced students. So I'm going to say less than half of the free and reduced. We have a lot of, of students that are not on that program that participate.
Oh, so you're saying 160 qualify, but they don't all?
Right, right.
Okay, gotcha.
What percent, what percent? What percent, what percent participate?
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, maybe a little more than 50 of those, a little more than 50%.
I would assume they bring their lunch?
Some bring their lunch. Some have told me before that they don't have time because of the way their class schedules are, or, yeah, I know, but, I know, I know, but I just want to, you know, that's what they're telling me, but they do have like, or they're just like on the go so much, so...
Or they may be a little like ala carte, you wouldn't know.
Right, that is true. Some grab a pretzel, and our ala carte would expand too than just what it is now. So, with more beverages, more snack options, and everything encompassed in the food court setting, it would be nice.
Robin, with this, they won't be forced to take a side, like since it's been longer?
No.
Because right now, you have to take so many things to make up a meal, so they won't just be forced to take something just to throw it away?
Right, right. Currently, you have to take a fruit and/or a vegetable to make it a meal, if not, you're charged ala carte, but no, that would not happen.
If we were to give you like a one-year trial, to go back, let's say we had one-year trial, decided, I think we're going to go back on the whole program. What would be, would there be any problems or difficulties in going back?
That would be through Brett's office, and they could check into all that. Usually, you just reapply.
There's no penalty or anything for going back?
No, not that I know of. You would lose the commodities for that.
You're lagging on commodities.
Yeah, you would lag two years behind on commodities, so if we would go off the program this year coming up, then it would be two years down the road, because the commodities that I will be doing for this coming school year, or I'm sorry, next school year, that happened two years ago.
But that's only as it relates to the high school.
That's only the high school.
The commodity loss would only be the high school.
Right.
And the reimbursement would only be the high school. The rest of the program would not be affected.
Correct.
You weren't allowed to do that?
Yes.
Yes. I think most districts that have gone off the program have done it at the high school level.
It seems to be the majority on the high school, yes.
Any other questions for Robin or Doug? Robin, when do we need to let you know? Can the board take until next month to make a decision?
Oh, sure, sure. The state requires the budget, and everything be submitted, and I said that would be fine.
Okay, good. All right.
Thank you. Let me know if you have any, please, more than half an answer.
Thanks, Robin.
Thank you.
So, a quick question. Is that able to be open like the study halls?
What?
Cafeteria? Do you have the ala carte stuff still open during those times? I'm just asking.
We do ala carte kinds of things elsewhere, but I think you run the risk of ruining the appetite, and I don't know, Brett, maybe you can ask that better?
Well, I think the other issue is you need the labor from Aramark to provide that, and I'm not sure if the sales would cover the cost of the labor.
Okay, I'm just asking, that's all.
We do, we do have the coffee shop that's open all day. They sell small snacks there.
Okay.
We also have Trenton's, our student representative.
All right, well, first off, that presentation was really exciting. I'm going to have one more year here, and that sounds like I would actually buy lunches, but I'll come back to that in a second. The PTHS annual food drive finished today, and we are still waiting the final count of how much we got in, but we're sure we met our goal. There's been, sure to me that we did meet it. All foods go to local food banks that serve our PT families, and a special thanks to all who participated, especially the outstanding support from the elementary schools. Next Wednesday, March 16th, is the third grade Big Buddy Program. We look forward to hosting the third graders in our school, and that's, of course, when the high schoolers write letters to third graders and they respond, and then we get to meet them. We held our senior citizen prom, and I didn't see any of you there, but I didn't see any of you there, but it was awesome. It was really fun. We had like, probably like 30 people come out. It was pretty cool. The jazz band and the chorus played, and then we also had an DJ and basket giveaways. It was pretty fun.
Did you need to use an AED at any time?
We did not have to use AED, but thanks to our wonderful health program, we're all certified, so, yeah. So, continuing with the lunches, just to let you know too about this, how the students feel, because I figured you would be interested in about the temporary lunch line. I'm not actually getting a lot of negativity surrounding the lunches. There is a petition circulating right now, asking for higher quality food, and I'm not sure that's going to actually materialize. I think there's like, only like a few hundred signatures, but, I mean, that just kind of goes to show that high schoolers do want higher quality lunches, and I think they're going to be willing to pay the cost, and I think that if only one-third of the students are participating, that kind of goes to show that there's something that we could be better... I personally am very excited to get off the federal program if that is how you're going to do it.
Were you part of her group?
I was a part, yes. I've been to a couple of the food tasting groups, and I have to admit, I've neglected to try most of the foods that she puts out, because I just think they're nasty looking. So, I've only tried a couple, and I think they were all breakfast foods, so my recommendation would be to see our options for next year would expand. Also, the student union unanimously decided to pass a student bill of rights, and we're having a lawyer look it over before we present it to Mr. Inglis and Mr. Aquilio, and then to you guys, but if you remember, that was one of my goals when I first became student union representative of the school board, was to pass a student bill of rights, so that should be coming up pretty soon. Are there any questions? All right.
Nice vote time.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, I do have a question for Trent.
Yes.
Now that this project's more than halfway through, you gave us your opinion and feedback on the food and the situation in the cafeteria. What's been the overall impression of what actually has been done to this building?
I think that students will be much more excited when the finished product is actually seen. I think that there's been a lot of excitement surrounding some things and a lot of disappointment surrounding other things, but I think this year, the school's done a lot better of communicating with the students about what they were doing, instead of just doing it and expecting students to adapt. Like, I think that it's done a lot better. This week, I remember a couple weeks ago, I stood here and complained about stairwells being closed without any prior notice, and this week, they were announced before it happened, and I got almost no complaints about it, like compared to the previous weeks where I was like, people were texting me, like, why are these stairwells closing? I think overall, the students have been excited about some of the changes, especially the library. The library was a big one, and I think once the new fitness center is like, kind of really open up to all of us, it'll be really exciting.
Okay, thank you.
All right? And I'm excited for the video room, so...
Just three other announcements too. One was related with the Graffers Foundation signed a naming rights agreement for the wrestling room, and submitted a check for the first two years. The total amount that they purchased in naming rights for the room was 25,000, so you're going to hear more about them after I do a press release, and we do like a nice, we do, of course, a sign, we have a nice reception, so that was very nice that came in. The second week of kindergarten registration was completed, and we have the exact same number, 204, as we did last year in the second week, so I don't know how that happened, but it was nice to see that we haven't went down. The last couple of years, we've always went down, and I'm always worried about enrollment, so the 204 holds up. We should be about 230 based on the averages of how we're watching the data, so... But then if you bow to 230, the class size that leaves us, 12 players or 332, so you will have some more enrollment decrease. And finally, I don't know if you read the newspaper lately, the Arg. 1 Home Buyers in Westmoreland County, they listed 20 of the top elementary schools for where you should go buy a house. Number one, and it also won a national, what's it called, the Krugula, Gold Medal of Excellence, was McCullough Elementary School, but we also had three of our other schools that made it. Number one was McCullough, two was Level Green, four was Sunrise, and Trafford was on the list of 18. So, it was nice to see that we had four of our schools on the list of 20 for a great place to buy a house, and I would definitely agree with them. And additional high school was number two, so it was definitely nice to see, said there's a lot of good properties and a lot of good places to be, it's a great township. It's nice to get recognized like that when you just happen to see, it's like, wow, people are paying attention to what we're doing, so that is all I have.
Towels, say it about towels again.
And the towels, oh, and the towels, the towel project, we are, we're doing the prospectus once again for the second part of the year, but we're going to be sending it out shortly. I know, it's going to be kind of Georgia's newspaper, so it's going to be coming to every single home. She's worked with us to get that out, and I really appreciate her time and effort she put into it. She was very easy to work with, so we're going to get it out to everyone, but one of our features in the prospectus is our new towel project. It's sort of like the towels you buy, it's $100 a square, or actually, you can put your name on there, your class year, if you was either in the band, if you was in a sport, if you was in a play, something to symbolize what you did or what you want to do, and we're going to do a towel, well, we're actually doing a display in the new auditorium, and we're also the new gymnasium. This way, if you want to gear yourself towards the five arts, that's fine, if you want to gear yourself towards sports, that's fine, so we have two different areas with towels. And actually, I sold my first one to Mr. Karazia.
It was a mistake, I thought it was free.
He bought my first one, just because it was previewed in the prospectus, and we haven't sent this out, that's going to be our first time to push to get it out, and it's nice to see. I always like when I go out to places and look at different towels and see that, especially when the kids put something on there, it's kind of nice to see. We're trying a lot of different ways to raise revenue and bring recognition to the school, and hopefully it works out. That's all I have for the report.
Next, we're going to recognize your visitors. The following rules are in effect. You must state your name, address, and group affiliation, if any. Your statements will be limited to five minutes in duration. All statements shall be directed to the president, and no person may address a question, a board member individually. I may interrupt your statements if your statement is too lengthy, personally direct, abusive, obscene, irrelevant.
And we are moving ahead tonight, because we are about to sign on something else, so that's why.
Okay, well, the first one, we have two guests tonight, Jillian Graber, neighbor.
You got it right. I'm your neighbor, so, thank you. Some of you may know me. My name is Jillian Graber. I live at 110 Bellewood Boulevard, Trafford, PA 15085, and I am a mom with two kids, well, one kid in the school district, the other one will be entering the school district in kindergarten next year, and I'm also a part of a statewide coalition called Protect Our Children Coalition. And three years ago, I moved to the school district, similarly to what Dr. Harris was talking about, because of the excellent reputation of the school district, because as I learned early on from my mother-in-law, who has been an educator for over 25 years, that children need stability. I wanted a safe place for my children to spend their educational career, and in late 2014, I learned the local government in Penn Township, a municipality that covers most, but not all of the school district, would put major changes to their zoning ordinance, creating a mineral extraction overlay, opening up the agricultural land for a heavy industrial activity commonly known as fracking. I became part of Protect PT as I learned that I had no say in this matter, because I live in Trafford, on the board of Penn Township, less than a half mile from a proposed site. Over the past year, I've been working to ensure the safety, security, and quality of life for the residents in the area, and since that time, members of our group have sent letters and emails to the board and Dr. Harris, and I was happy to see that Dr. Harris attended their February 5th meeting in 2015. But after my email last November, I haven't heard anything from the board that eases my mind that the protection of our children are an important part of the district with this particular subject. The industrial activity is more than a tax-based issue. It is a safety issue for all of our children in the district. It will change life for the district drastically. How has the school board kept itself informed of the township's planning and zoning commission's actions? How has the board weighed in on the safety and security needs of the school district in regards to fracking? We see nothing publicly to that effect. Last week, I joined members of Protect Our Children Coalition at a press conference at the DEP Regional Office in order to bring attention to a new study just released by Dr. Marcia Haley, a radiation oncologist with UPMC's Cancer Center. This study in-depth analysis of current data looked at air samples at 625 feet from well pads and associated infrastructure. The study in particular was particularly relevant to this board, as the proposed Penn Township setback is 600 feet. One of the most disturbing findings of the study were the benzene levels, a known carcinogen. Benzene levels exceed the Agency for Toxic Substance and Disease Registry's minimum risk level for acute exposure. Some studies around unconventional gas development activities have found benzene, particulate matter, formaldehyde, and other chemicals at levels that exceed the state and federal limits. Benzene can be particularly harmful to children because it stays close to the ground. Children have higher respiratory rates. As a result, children exposed to air contaminants breathe in more toxins per pound of body weight than adults. Children accumulate more toxins in their bodies than adults. Their bodies are still maturing, and they cannot metabolize these toxins. Children spend more time engaging in vigorous activities outside, and children's brains are still developing. Many toxic agents are known to interfere with developmental processes within the brain. What is impact on Penn Trafford School District? Today, we own seven well sites and over 35 wells with one drilling company, and other drillers are waiting in the wings to turn Penn Trafford School District into a heavy industrial web of infrastructure, including large well pads, compressor stations, pipelines, condensate tanks, and pig launchers, all of which are known to emit volatile organic compounds, PM 2.5, which is small particulate matter, and known carcinogens such as benzene and toluene. Four of these paths are located in the Level Green area, within a mile from Level Green Elementary School. I'm asking the board to immediately get involved to stop the local ordinance from allowing this activity to be so close to children. Working with Protect PT for over a year now, I have been in contact with several parents who were going to move to the area because of the reputation of the school, but have decided not to because of the proposed activity. I also know several more parents that will have vowed to move outside of the school district if this activity starts, especially in mobile training. Thank you, and I hope that we can bring stability to our children. Thank you.
Next one is Michelle Clansmith.
Hello, thanks for your time. My name's Michelle Clansmith, and I'm a mother of two kids that go right here to Penn Trafford High School. Over a year ago, I actually wrote to the school board and sent a letter on January 20th, 2015, and I asked you to take action and get involved in the proposed Penn Township review of potential shell gas drilling in the district. And my personal concerns are many, but just to focus, I had asked the board to provide me with your plan to do the following, so I'm just going to briefly read what I wrote to you a year ago. "We ask for your efforts to prevent the unconventional drilling in our community, and if you were not successful, or we were not successful in that, we needed to understand what the school board's plan was for the following. One, removing all of the school bus stops along Route 130 and along Saunders Station Road as soon as the construction begins, and continue to remove the school bus stops along any other fracking truck routes as the new well sites are approved. Two, changing the bus schedules and the start or end of the school day to accommodate for the dramatically increased traffic, and if you see anything in the news in any other area, you can clearly see how the traffic changes once this occurs. Three, develop a hydraulic fracturing accident evacuation plan for the school district. And four, evaluate the plan of how the schools would be used for multiple weeks to house citizens in the schools if an accident occurs in the district." And again, that's something very common. It's in your emergency plans that I have here, and you see that in other areas where there has been fracking accidents. So, I think these are all four critical things. If you can't stop the fracking, what are we going to do to keep our children safe? As one of the Trafford School Board's non-negotiable goals, one of your goals, if you see it on your website, is school will be a safe environment for all students and staff. So, again, a year ago, it asked you to get involved and speak out and try to protect our children. Now, I'm not going to assume that everything that you do gets into the press. You may be working very hard behind the scenes, and we don't see it, but we haven't seen the school board try to stop this before it's too late. Since it's been over a year since my request, I've received nothing personally, and I haven't seen anything in press to show the efforts in this regard. If I look at your emergency preparedness SOP, you must review the plan annually and run at least one safety drill a year, and could you tell me if you've run the safety drill for a fracking truck spill on Route 130, just an example? drill for a fracking truck spill on Route 130, just an example, or an spill on Saunders Station Road? Which schools will you be used, and how will you manage that in an emergency for any of these prepared well pads? You're supposed to run the emergency plan and then obviously notify the parents of that, and I'm, I know you go through a lot of emergencies, but have you built an emergency plan and done it in the last year specifically for a fracking or well accident? I'm assuming you can't respond to that, so.
For the fracking incident, no, we haven't had a fracking emergency evacuation.
So it's, again, something we're asking, do you build it into your plan and actually prepare for it, and then obviously make it public for the parents, so we're aware of how you would be able to handle that. So that's what I originally wanted to talk about, just a little comment on the food situations as I here attended. Just make sure that you really see the numbers in terms of the difference of what you'd have to subsidize for that. That was a very general presentation, I'm hoping they would, Aramark would give you a much more specific financials, and I have a high school student, one's a senior, I'm very concerned about when she gets up to Penn State, the food choices she's going to make. The kids don't look at the prices because the parents have a plan, they just give their student ID number, they're not doing the math calculations on the food. But every time you give a choice of an unhealthy option, if you give them fried instead of baked, if you give them, you know, unhealthy foods versus healthy foods, the concern is setting them up for overweight and weight gain and making unhealthy choices. So as you run the numbers to see how you can avoid losing $20,000 a year, don't make it so that the food is expensive and tastes great, but then we have health concerns, because students don't really think about that at this young age. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
I'd like to respond, safety has always been premier with us in the school district, and we'll take your words in consideration, but, and thank you for presenting your words.
And I, I forgot, I have the studies, the links to the studies are very lengthy, so I didn't want to pick them out nine times. I also have for everyone.
Give Dr. Harris.
The mineral extraction overlay and where the schools are located, and then some of our educational events we have coming up, so, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Harris, can I continue?
Yes. I was actually back, I'm done with the information, I recognize your vision, visitors. Next week, under athletics and extracurricular, we're gonna ask you to accept resignations, approve volunteer coaches. Under budget and finance, approve expenditure for the high school renovation projects according to the schedule, as was Scott addressed earlier, approve change orders, as discussed by Scott earlier, approve audit of the financial statements and single audit of 2014, 2015, and that was according to the presentation you heard from Sarp. Approve general operating budget for Westmoreland IU, set number 2016, 2017. And I want to discuss this for a few minutes. Authorize administration to secure a line of credit for short-term loan, which one of the threats?
Well, we're now here in the beginning of March, the governor has made his 2016-17 budget presentation, and yet we still don't have a state budget for 2015-16. As the auditors indicated, we have a healthy fund balance, we should be, we shouldn't have any issues going forward. However, as a means to protect ourselves, I am recommending that we establish a line of credit that if the budget impasse continues on into the summer, we may get to the point where we don't wanna exhaust all our reserves in the event of an emergency, so we wanna establish a line of credit in the event that we need it. Again, we're hopeful that we're not gonna need it, however, as this debacle in Harrisburg goes on, I just think it's prudent, as many other districts have established a line of credit, that we should do the same. We won't draw any more than we need, we won't incur any more interest than we, than we have to, but again, it'd be my intention that if we do have interest, we're gonna send the bill back to Harrisburg and let them put the bill for not maintaining their constitutional responsibility to fund, to fund the schools. So we just want the authorization to get that process moving, and if there are no objections, we'll have that on the agenda for next week, and we'll be prepared in the event that this thing drags on any longer than it already has.
Does anyone have any questions? It's you. Okay, thank you. All right, under buildings, we want to have anything for buildings, ground, and safety, employee relations, negotiations, transportation, and food service, and their personnel and curriculum. Approve substitute teachers and support personnel, accept retirement resignations, approve lease requests, issue professional contracts with employee personnel, and we're gonna have an action item, which we want to do tonight. This is about the one makeup day we have. As you remember, February 16th, Tuesday, February 16th, we did not have school, I think most school districts in Pennsylvania did not have school, with the amount of ice at the end of that day, and we have to make it up. We do have our scheduled makeup day, which would be 24.
March 24th.
Correct. And we did have some parents calling and asking if we could switch that this year because of the, some students were on the band trip, and I understand that, because there were a lot of students on the band trip, but unfortunately, we have the calendar scheduled, we also, some of their parents would also have, go by that calendar, so we changed it for one group of people, you might actually cause a disruption for another group of people. In addition, we also have, for students, a lot of their drivers might have a different schedule, because when they're days off, they take another job. Same with our staff members, we have, like, things scheduled. So I think the safest thing to do this year would be to schedule it as it is, but next year, I would recommend on our calendar, just switching the days from making Tuesday our first makeup day, and making Thursday our second makeup day, so in case this kind of happens again, or you can actually switch it around. So I couldn't do anything this year, but next year, looking forward, we can actually make stronger improvements for it.
Mr. Stover?
Yeah, so given that, I move to confirm the following makeup day, as designated on the approved school calendar for the 2015-16 school year. We're gonna, school was closed due to inclement weather on Tuesday, February 16th, 2016, the makeup day will now be Thursday, March 24th, 2016.
Motion, Mr. Stover, is second?
Second.
Second, down, down, saying question on motion, all voters sitting in front by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Continue, Dr. Harris.
The next week, that's when we want to make the revised revisions for the 2016-2017 calendar. Approve conference requests, approve expulsion, approve, I should say, approve expulsion agreement, approve student teacher assignments, under Policy of Public Relations Legislative Title III, Title II, I'm sorry, accept and file information committee meeting minutes of February 1st, 2016, approve student assistant program agreement for 2016, 2017, final approval of new board policies, under taxes incentives, I'm sorry, taxes, insurance incentives, exonerate tax collectors for unpaid taxes turned over to the county. That is all I have.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Harris. Any motion for German?
Love.
Motion by, which man, I was the second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rastignol. All voters sitting in front by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Next week.
So, thank you.